Bienvenidos al Tribunal Supremo de la Reunión de los Reinos. Hoy estamos escuchando el apelio de ZED contra el Consejo de London Borough. Estamos escuchando este caso remotamente debido a las restricciones actuales sobre las reuniones. Estoy escuchando este caso con cuatro de mis colegas, el señor Kur, la señora Arden, el señor Kitchen y el señor Sales. Empezamos a escuchar este apelio ayer cuando nos abordó el señor Ian Wise, Consejo de la Reunión de los Reinos, a cargo de los apelantes. Y hoy continuamos escuchando la respuesta de la Asociación de vivienda israelí Aghudas, representada por el señor Sam Grodzinski, Consejo de la Reunión de los Reinos. Los detalles del caso pueden encontrarse en nuestro sitio web si se clickean en Casos y luego encontrará el enlace a los casos actuales. Ahora invito al señor Grodzinski a resumir sus submisiones.
Buenos días, mis señores, mis señoras. Sumergí ayer nuestro caso en respuesta a los grados tres y cuatro del apelio sobre si el Tribunal Divisional estaba autorizado a averiguar que la política de Aghudas era proporcional bajo la sección 158 y 193.2a. Si aceptan esas submisiones, entonces el apelio tendría que fallar independientemente del efecto de la sección 193.2b. También resumí por qué subimos en adición que la sección 193.2b es compatible con los requisitos de la Directiva de Raza y el artículo 14, asumiendo que están involucrados, sin necesidad de leer cualquier requisito adicional para evaluar la proporcionalidad a base de caso a caso. De nuevo, si esa submisión logra, entonces el apelio tendría que fallar porque ahora es un marco común donde los requisitos expresos de la sección 193.2b están satisfechos en este caso. Así que si aceptan nuestras submisiones en cualquiera de esos dos asuntos, entonces no tendrían que determinar las preguntas lógicamente anteriores de si la Directiva de Raza o el artículo 14 estaban involucrados en primer lugar en los hechos de este caso. Pero ¿puedo resumir brevemente nuestras submisiones a esos dos temas, comenzando con el involucramiento de la Directiva de Raza, aunque deba ser? Primero, sobre la cuestión de si había discriminación directa en base a la etnica matrilineal. La simple pregunta, como se explica en el caso de JFS, es cuál fue el criterio factual usado por el supuesto discriminador para determinar su decisión. En este caso, el criterio factual fue si o no la persona que se aplica para vivienda social siguió los requisitos religiosos del ortodoxismo judío. Si el candidato no siguió esos requisitos religiosos y no era así un miembro de la OJC, entonces no, bajo las circunstancias de mercado actuales, estarían proporcionados con la comodidad de Aghudas bajo la política, independientemente de si eran judíos bajo un test matrilineal. Así que ese es un breve resumen de por qué la discriminación directa en este caso estaba en base a la religión y no en base a la etnica. En cuanto a discriminación indirecta, la reciente decisión del Tribunal de Justicia en EF3334, en el caso de Zeisker Finanz, hace claro que para establecer discriminación indirecta en base a la etnica, la práctica o criterio relevante tiene que poner a personas de una origen etnico particular a una desventaja en comparación con otras y que no será suficiente si la desventaja afecta a todos fuera del grupo de ventajas de una manera indiferentemente diferente, es decir, sin importar su origen etnico en particular. En el caso actual, esa es exactamente la posición. La política de Aghudas no pone a personas de cualquier grupo etnico particular a una desventaja porque no hay, evidentemente, ninguna comunidad de etnica entre todas las personas en Hackney o en el mundo que no cumplen el test de descendencia matrilineal. Por eso decimos que no hay discriminación racial. Pasando entonces al artículo 8 y al artículo 14, puedo resumir nuestro caso aún más brevemente sobre por qué este caso no cae dentro del ámbito del artículo 8. Aunque puede ser difícil discernir una claridad y consistente prudencia jurídica de Strasbourg sobre este tema, lo que es claro es que no hay caso de Strasbourg o de caso doméstico que encuentre que el artículo 8 está involucrado donde una persona está siendo transferida de una propiedad a otra bajo un esquema de vivienda social. Y tal conclusión es contraria a los principios establecidos en la decisión del Tribunal de Apelio en el caso de Ealing en EF2786 y no hay nada sobre el hecho particular de este caso que lleve a una conclusión diferente. Finalmente, por medio de introducción, vale la pena considerar las sorprendentes y extremas consecuencias si el caso de Wise es correcto. Estos son mejor ilustrados mostrándoles dos ejemplos de arreglos legales y caritables, uno dado en las notas explicativas del Acto de 2010 y el otro dado en el Código Estatutal publicado por la Comisión de Derechos de Igualdad y Humanos. Pasando al primer ejemplo, es en EF2386. Eso es el tablo de autoridades tres, para aquellos que trabajan en las copias duras. Verán en la mitad inferior de la página, estos son las notas explicativas de la sección 193 y, de forma rápida, invitaría a mis señores y señoras a leer todos los párrafos bajo ese encabezado, 608 hasta 611. Pero por el momento, ¿podrían ver el ejemplo en la parte inferior de la página? Es legal para el instituto de mujeres proporcionar oportunidades educativas solo a mujeres. En el caso de Wise, eso sería caracterizado como una regla automática y incondicional en favor de las mujeres, admitiendo sin excepciones a los hombres que podrían ser capaces de mostrar una necesidad educativa agresiva y, por lo tanto, sería ilegal. De hecho, en el caso de Wise, el instituto de mujeres tendría que llevar a cabo una evaluación de caso a caso de las necesidades educativas de cada hombre y mujer que quisiera participar en el curso educativo relevante y usar el sexo de una mujer solo como un parpadeo en otros candidatos igualmente ubicados. El instituto de mujeres, uno sospecha, simplemente dejaría de operar. El siguiente ejemplo es del Código EHRC EF2412, el tablo de autoridades cuatro. Esto es, de nuevo, en la guía del código sobre las carituras que empieza en la página anterior. Pero si miran el 2413, la parte superior de 2413, el ejemplo dado es el siguiente: Si el grupo seleccionado, por ejemplo, gipses y viajeros, es desfavorecido en términos de pobre aprobación educativa, entonces, dependiendo de las provisiones de su instrumento caritativo, la caridad debería ser capaz de proporcionar beneficios para ayudar a superar la desventaja vinculada a su raza. Estos podrían incluir recursos financieros para proyectos educativos, instalaciones educativas adicionales, entrenamiento para los personalizadores de profesionales con las necesidades de aprendizaje particulares del grupo, etc. Sin embargo, si el caso de Wise es correcto, este ejemplo dado por la Comisión de Derechos de Igualdad y Humanos sería ilegal por razones similares a las que he dado en relación con el instituto de mujeres. La caridad tendría que permitir a las personas que no eran gipses y viajeros que se aplica a este grupo de beneficios y tendría que tener una evaluación objetiva de todas las necesidades educativas de cada candidato y solo usar la membresía del grupo de gipses y viajeros como parpadeo. ¿Puedo, por favor, antes de pasar a cada de los temas legales, decir algunas palabras sobre los hechos, principalmente para responder a algunas de las submisiones de Wise ayer? Primero, Wise dijo que según la evidencia, Aghudas es la única asociación de vivienda en el país que asigna vivienda solo a un grupo particular de faith. Eso no resumirá justamente la evidencia. No hay ninguna encuesta o otra evidencia comprensiva antes del tribunal sobre las políticas de muchas asociaciones de vivienda en este país, incluyendo aquellas que benefician a grupos particulares, si o no bajo instrumentos caritativos o otherwise. El tribunal simplemente no tiene evidencia sobre si y cómo muchas de esas asociaciones de vivienda reservan sus propiedades a personas de un grupo particular que comparten una de las características protegidas bajo el Acto de 2010, ya sea exclusivamente o no exclusivamente. Lo más alto que puede poner un amigo es que había alguna evidencia sobre solo tres otras asociaciones de vivienda que no limitaron su provisión de esta manera. Pero, importante, el tribunal, de nuevo, no tiene ninguna evidencia en absoluto sobre las necesidades y desventajas enfrentadas por los grupos relevantes atendidos por esas tres asociaciones de vivienda, ni sobre cuestiones de oferta y demanda de las propiedades en cuestión. El caso escrito de Wise al final del parágrafo 98 afirma, afirma que estas otras asociaciones de vivienda estaban, "presumiblemente operando en condiciones de mercado similarmente exigentes a Aghudas". No hay razón por la que esa presumptividad debe ser bien fundada y voy a darles una referencia para ilustrar eso. Uno de los ejemplos en los que Wise se basa es la Asociación de vivienda israelí Leeds. Pero solo para darles una ilustración de por qué esa comparación no puede ser realizada, ¿podrían, por favor, pasar a EF966? Esto es parte de un largo informe sobre la pobreza infantil y la privación en la comunidad israelí británica, formado parte de una plethora de evidencia antes del Tribunal Divisional. En la tabla en la parte inferior de la página verán información sobre niños dependientes judíos en viviendas rentadas sociales. Verán que Hackney tiene 864 niños y comprende el 34,3% del número total, mientras que Leeds tiene menos del 10% de eso, 75 niños dependientes, que, de nuevo, comprende menos del 10% del número de Hackney, 3%. Eso solo muestra cómo uno simplemente no puede leer a través de un ejemplo hacia el otro y decir que todos operan en condiciones similares. El siguiente punto factual, que quiero corregir, se relaciona con la submisión de Wise de que AHA no asigna vivienda a base de necesidad. Eso es incorrecto. Como mencioné ayer, la política de Aghudas opera sobre un sistema basado en puntos relacionado con las necesidades de los candidatos, lo cual es muy similar al sistema basado en puntos operado por Hackney mismo. Eso es un marco común, vean SFI, parágrafo seis, y la política completa, no voy a llevarlos a ello, pero para su nota, es EF370. El siguiente punto factual se relaciona con la submisión de Wise de que los apelantes tienen la mayor necesidad de vivienda de prioridad posible porque fueron hecho una oferta directa...
¿Podría repetir eso? Quiero decir, Grodzinski, ¿podría repetirlo? No lo entendí, por favor.
SFI, parágrafo seis, y la propia política es EF370. El siguiente punto, como mencioné, se relaciona con la submisión de Wise de que los apelantes tienen la mayor necesidad de vivienda posible porque fueron hecho una oferta directa de vivienda durante el compromiso de una revisión judicial previa traída contra Hackney. Y su implicación es que eso es así en cualquier escala objetiva de necesidad. Pero esa submisión entiende mal la naturaleza del sistema de asignación de vivienda de Hackney y entiende mal el marco legal bajo el que opera, como se explica por la decisión del Tribunal de Reinos en el caso de Ahmad. Voy a llegar al caso de Ahmad más tarde esta mañana, pero por el momento, el punto está plenamente presentado por el caso escrito de Hutchings para Hackney. Por favor, veanlo ahora, EF153. Este es el parágrafo nueve. "Las reglas de prioridad bajo el esquema de asignación de vivienda de Hackney no se requerían y no pretendían proporcionar una evaluación comprensiva o objetivamente autoritativa de las necesidades de la casa individual relacionadas con la vivienda. En cambio, eran un instrumento pragmático para priorizar a los candidatos en circunstancias donde hay más de 12.000 candidatos elegibles en la lista, diez veces el número de anuncios. Los esquemas de asignación de vivienda no se requieren identificar cuáles son las casas individuales que están en la mayor necesidad en un determinado momento. Vean Ahmad. Por lo tanto, mientras las reglas de prioridad hicieron provisiones para la overcrowación y la necesidad de moverse debido a amenazas de violencia, no seguían factores como el antisemitismo, privación y pobreza, pobreza infantil, una necesidad religiosa y cultural de vivir en una localidad particular o adaptaciones religiosas. En ese contexto, ¿puedo, después, llevarlos al material factual estableciendo la posición de las familias judías ortodoxas que estaban vividas por Aghudas en casas Gelman y Zemba, resumido por el Tribunal Divisional en el parágrafo 23 y que hemos referido en nuestro caso escrito? ¿Puedo empezar, por favor, con EF1457? En el parágrafo 23. Esta es la primera declaración de la señora Simons. "Desde que el desencadenador de estos procedimientos es la asignación de unidades de vivienda sociales a las nuevas desarrollaciones de Aghudas en casas Zemba y Gelman, me gustaría que el tribunal sepa la naturaleza y el fondo de las familias necesarias que han sido exitosamente aplicadas para las casas de tres y cuatro habitantes en los dos esquemas a través de las nominaciones de Hackney. Y luego ella exhibe una descripción narrativa de ellos. Si podrían pasar a eso, por favor, en 1483. Y voy a enfocarme solo en el primer ejemplo en la parte superior de 1483. "Una familia que comprende a dos adultos y seis niños. Estaban viviendo en una pequeña casa de dos habitantes con seis niños, lo que significaba que había cuatro niños durmiendo en el salón de cenita, que tampoco era una habitación suficientemente grande y que apenas podía contener tantas mampitas. Dos de sus hijos sufrieron necesidades médicas, el primero, de edad de seis, es hiperactivo y las condiciones de vivienda sobrecargadas empeoraron su condición dramáticamente. Realmente necesitaba su propio cuarto, lo cual era absolutamente imposible en las circunstancias. Como resultado de la falta de espacio, terminaría perjudicando a sí mismo y a sus hermanos debido a la ansiedad que sintió en esta casa apretada. El trece añino tiene un retraso en la discusión y las condiciones de la casa causaron que sus comunicaciones se empeoraran considerablemente. Para agregar su dificultad, su dueño les ofreció la solicitud de vacar la propiedad debido a la overcrowación. Y luego el parágrafo final de esa subsección. "Esta familia ha estado esperando en la lista de Hackney por casi cuatro años. Una nueva casa de cuatro habitantes en la casa de Zemba es un salvador para la familia, los niños finalmente tienen espacio. Así que me pregunto si la atención se presta en el contexto de la submisión de Wise de que la política de asignación de vivienda de Aghudas está basada en la religión y no en las necesidades. Por supuesto, esa no es la posición. Finalmente, sobre los hechos, quiero corregir un punto que hizo Wise al principio cuando se referió a la evidencia de riesgo físico al hijo del primer apelante de la propiedad en la que estaban viviendo. Esto ecoa una submisión en su caso escrito en el parágrafo 48a cuando sugiere que el transfer de comodidad relevante en este caso fue de una comodidad que era peligrosa y se referió a la ayuda de terapeuta ocupacional que hizo que eso fuera bueno. La dificultad de esa submisión es que entiende mal la cronología. Bueno antes de que se iniciara esta declaración judicial contra mi cliente, el apelante ya había sido transferido de la propiedad peligrosa por Hackney después de una revisión judicial anterior contra Hackney, que fue comprometida y que llevó a una oferta directa y a la que ni siquiera fuimos parte. Cuando el apelante comenzó la segunda revisión judicial, que fue la que incluía a mi cliente como segundo demandante, la propia evidencia del apelante hace claro que no estaban viviendo en ninguna propiedad peligrosa. Y para mostrarles por qué es así, ¿podrían pasar a EF779? Poniendolo en la última sentencia del parágrafo siete, exhibí esta declaración del informe del Consejo de la Reunión de los Reinos que apoya la re-hub housing y el informe de terapia del Consejo de la Reunión de los Reinos, por lo que el informe de visita al domicilio y un informe de un tribunal independiente y la orden de la señora Justicia May, que requería que Hackney nos proporcionara comodidad segura después de todo. Eso es en la revisión judicial anterior a la que mi cliente no era parte. Después de la orden del tribunal de alto nivel, con algún retraso, nos proporcionamos comodidad en un departamento de servicio algún lugar alejado de Stanford Hill y luego volvimos al estatuto, a nuestra casa temporal actual. Los niños encuentran el cambio muy difícil y este movimiento de un hogar temporal a otro fue destructivo. La vida es mucho más fácil aquí que en el primer hogar porque no me preocupa constantemente los niños cayendo o subiendo por la balcón de acceso. Este gran riesgo ha sido removido. Así que es por eso que decimos que es incorrecto sugerir que la propiedad de la que fueron transferidos en estos procedimientos era una peligrosa. Y eso será relevante si tenemos que llegar allí al tema del artículo ocho. Eso es todo lo que quiero decir, por favor, sobre los hechos. ¿Puedo ahora pasar a el grado tres bajo el que Wise argumenta que la acción positiva legal nunca entiende preferencias automáticas y incondicionales para el grupo protegido, mientras siempre involucra una evaluación de caso a caso de mérito y solo puede operar como un parpadeo? Nuestro primer punto en respuesta es la bien establecida proposición de que los requisitos de proporcionalidad, incluidos en la ley de Europa, varían en función del contexto. En apoyo, ¿puedo mostrar, mis señores y señoras, el juicio de mi señor Reed junto con el señor Tullson en el caso de Londres, que ustedes pueden recordar, sobre si el esquema para la regulación de los estándares de advocacy del tribunal era proporcional? Es en EF2841, el tablo de autoridades dieciocho. Si miran, por favor, dentro del parágrafo 23 de EF2841, justo debajo de la letra E y debajo de la referencia al libro de texto Tridentmas. La sentencia comienza: "También se debe decir que cualquier intento de identificar principios generales riesga transmitir la impresión de que el enfoque del tribunal es menos nuance y sensivo de los hechos que en realidad es el caso. Como en el caso de otros principios de derecho público, la forma en que se aplica el principio de proporcionalidad en la ley de Europa depende en una medida significativa del contexto". Y luego, poniendolo, por favor, en la parte superior de 2844, todavía dentro del juicio de Reed y Tullson, justo debajo de la letra A, tercera línea abajo en 2844. "Sin embargo, es importante evitar un enfoque excesivamente esquemático debido a que la prudencia jurídica indica que el principio de proporcionalidad es flexible en su aplicación. El caso de la ley del tribunal aplicando el principio en un contexto no puede necesariamente ser tratado como un guía confiable de cómo se aplicará el principio en otro contexto. Es necesario examinar cómo en práctica el tribunal ha aplicado el principio en el contexto particular en cuestión. Esas observaciones son con respeto particularmente pertinentes en este apelio porque, como he anticipado ayer, no se puede leer a través del contexto actual declaraciones del Tribunal de Justicia hechas en un contexto muy diferente de tratamiento igual en el área específica de reclutamiento y promoción. ¿Puedo, con esa introducción, pasar entonces al caso de la ley del Tribunal de Justicia? Voy a tratar con los casos en dos grupos. El primero, los casos que decimos que tienen algo de relevancia al respecto actual, principalmente las decisiones en Badeq y Lomas. Y luego el segundo grupo, principalmente Kalanki, Marshall, Abraham San and Brihech, todos los cuales puedo tratar brevemente porque son, como acabo de decir, informativos de la correcta abordanza en este caso. "Los atendidos de Badeq y Lomas preocupan al menos en parte la acción positiva en el tribunal y en el contexto de la asignación de recursos limitados. En nuestra submisión, el enfoque del tribunal en estos dos casos es inconsistente con el caso del apelante en dos aspectos clave. Primero, porque el tribunal tomó en cuenta claramente factores relacionados con la oferta y la demanda o lo que el señor Wise afirmó en sus escritas submisiones y, a cierto punto, en sus submisiones aúrrales, son condiciones de mercado irrelevantes. En segundo lugar, estos casos son informativos porque el tribunal no sugirió que en el contexto de una asignación de recursos limitada la acción positiva solo sería proporcional si entretuvo una evaluación individual de la obligación objetiva a beneficio o si el sexo del candidato operaba solo como un parpadeo. Badeq, autoridades 38, EF3431. "En este caso, el tribunal fue llamado a decidir si varias medidas de acción positiva diferentes pasadas por la legislatura Hessana sobre acceso al empleo de servicios públicos eran compatibles con el artículo dos de la Directiva de tratamiento igual de 1976 y encontró que todos ellos eran legales. No voy a pasar por cada uno. Lo más pertinente a nuestro caso fue la regla, la regla doméstica por la cual al menos la mitad de los lugares de entrenamiento para el empleo de servicios públicos tenía que ser asignada a las mujeres. El tribunal sostuvo que esto era legal y lo hizo al tomar en cuenta factores que en el caso de Wise son irrelevantes. Solo para ponerlo, por favor, en 3453 ven las provisiones relevantes de la Directiva de 1976, que se puede ver vista en casos posteriores también. Si solo miran el artículo 2.1 y 2.4 de la Directiva en el medio de la página. Y luego, si se mueve a la legislación nacional en juego, está establecido en plena forma desde 3454 hasta 3455. Hay muchas medidas diferentes. Lo que quiero ver en particular es en 3455, entre las letras H y J, bajo el encabezado de asignación de lugares de entrenamiento. "En ocupaciones entrenadas en las que las mujeres son underrepresentadas, deben ser tomadas en cuenta hasta el punto de al menos la mitad en la asignación de lugares de entrenamiento. La primera sentencia no aplicará a los procedimientos de entrenamiento en los que el Estado proporciona exclusivamente entrenamiento. Las medidas adecuadas deben ser tomadas para atraer la atención de las mujeres a los lugares de entrenamiento vacíos en ocupaciones en el sentido de la primera sentencia y inducirlas a aplicar. Si, a pesar de esas medidas, no hay suficiente aplicación para las mujeres, más de la mitad de los lugares de entrenamiento puede ser llenos de hombres". more than half of the training places may be filled with men. The court's consideration of this starts at EF three-four-six-one and following. Can I take you, please, to paragraph forty-five on three-four-six-one? By the third part of its question, the Staatsgerechtung essentially asks whether Articles two-one and two-four of the directive precludes a national rule for the public service, which in trained occupations in which women are underrepresented and for which the state does not have a monopoly of training, allocates at least half of the training places to women. Then it describes the applicant's submissions relying on the Kalanki case. And then picking it up over the page, paragraph fifty on EF three-four-six-two. As appears from the Statement of Reasons Concerning Paragraph Seven of the Legislation, the Hesse Legislature by introducing a strict result quota as regards professional training to facilitate access, intended to establish a balanced allocation of training places at least in the public service. That intention doesn't however necessarily entail total inflexibility. Paragraph seven-two clearly provides that if despite appropriate measures for drawing the attention of women to the training places, there aren't enough applications to women, it's possible for more than half of those places to be taken by men. And then fifty-three, since the quota applies only to training places for which the state doesn't have a monopoly and therefore concerns training for which places are also available in the private sector, no male candidate is definitively excluded from training. Taking an overall view of training, public and private sectors, the provision at issue therefore merely improves the chances of female candidates in the public sector. The measures provided for are thus measures which are intended to eliminate the causes of women's reduced opportunities of access to employment and careers, and moreover consist of measures regarding vocational orientation and training. They are authorized. So we can see that the court is taking into account what Mr. Wise would call an irrelevant market condition, namely that the rule only applies where the state didn't have a monopoly on training places. Just as in our case, Agudas has nothing like a monopoly on social housing in Hackney.
But there is a critical difference here, isn't there, Mr. Gudinski? All the preference is doing is enabling the women to up their skill set by taking training places, and it gives them a priority in relation to the training. When it comes to the actual job, they compete with the men on an equal basis. But of course, hopefully, they've got some skills which they wouldn't otherwise have had. So it's not really a comparable case. I hope you're going to come on to deal with what is the disadvantage between, the difference between, quotes, disadvantage and needs. Section one-five-eight uses both terms, but in one-nine-three, when we're dealing with charities, it only uses the expression disadvantage.
My lady, I will come on to deal with that. And my lady is absolutely right to focus on it, because in these cases, we are talking about disadvantages, obviously of a different kind to the disadvantages faced by my clients. But these cases do not talk in terms of meeting needs, specific needs such as the need for living in a religious community close to each other and the other needs identified by the divisional court.
The divisional court, of course, didn't deal with the one-nine-three point in any depth. They really said it's within one-five-eight, so we don't have to deal with one-nine-three. But there is a distinct difference between the scope of both sections.
My lady, yes, at the moment, though, I am dealing only with one-five-eight and one-nine-three-two-A. But the primary case, as my lady knows, is that the arrangements made by Agudas are proportionate. I'm not in the latter question of whether one-nine-three-two-B needs to have a case-by-case proportionality assessment read into it. So the divisional, the divisional court did deal with the question of proportionality. Indeed, that was, that was its central finding. It found that Agudas' arrangements were proportionate under one-five-eight and one-nine-three-two, although it didn't distinguish between one-nine-three-two-A and B, which is a point I will deal with later on.
Yes, I mean, it wouldn't be proportionate, for instance, to recognize the need of the OJC for housing and then to offer them freehold properties in Eaton Square. It has to be a legitimate, it has to be a proportionate method of meeting the need.
Well, i-if they offered wealthy people, or indeed anybody, freehold properties in Eaton Square, it might be that somebody would complain to the regulator of social housing and say that this charity is not performing its functions properly.
I wasn't dealing with wealthy people, but if you had.
Or even, or even poor people. If you gave, if you gave a mansion in Eaton Square or somewhere similar.
That would not be proportionate. I think we're agreed. I'm just trying to give you an example of how the wording might bite.
My, my lady, yes.
But there's still this problem of what is a disadvantage and what is a need?
Well.
Sometime, not now.
A disadvantage might be a disadvantage arising from antisemitism. So if somebody goes to the private housing sector and they have long black coats and big hats and side locks, the evidence is, as accepted by the divisional court, that they will face a disadvantage in obtaining housing in the private sector because of antisemitism. An example of a need might be the example of the need to live close, within walking distance to synagogues on the Sabbath, because you can't walk five miles from another part of Hackney with your six children in tow to go to synagogue as you do three times a day on the Sabbath. That might be a need. I mean, you can, you might also characterize it as a disadvantage, but ultimately, I don't suspect too much turns on that. I hope those are helpful illustrations, my lady. So my lady is on mute.
Sorry, it's important to identify the disadvantage quite precisely, because of course, we have to ensure that the charitable activity is linked to that disadvantage.
My lady, yes, I would accept that. Can I just say one other point before leaving Badek? You've seen that the court took into account in paragraph fifty-one the saving provision that more than half of training places could be allocated to men if there were insufficient applications from women. Just as in our case, Agudas has said that in the highly unlikely event of there being insufficient numbers of applicants for housing from the OJC, it would allow applications from the wider public community. That's their unchallenged evidence, and that was referred to by the divisional court. Can I then turn, please, to the case of Lomas EF three-three-seven-seven? Where the approach in Badek was then expressly referred to in the court's judgment decided two years after Badek. Lomas, as Mr. Wise mentioned yesterday, concerned a policy of the Dutch Ministry of Agriculture by which it reserved nursery places to its female members of staff. And the court held that that was lawful. The policy is described in EF three-four-oh-three, paragraph thirteen. On the fifth of December, Mr. Lomas asked the ministry to reserve a nursery place for his as-yet-unborn child. His request was rejected on the ground that children of male officials could be given places in the nursery facilities only in cases of emergency. At paragraphs thirty to thirty-two, starting three-four-oh-six, we don't need to look at them. The court found that the scheme was indirectly discriminatory, and therefore the question arose whether that was permissible under the positive action provisions of Article two-four. In paragraph thirty-three, the court referred back to its decision in Badek. That's what it's referring to in the first sentence of paragraph thirty-three. But what I want to do is to take you straight, please, to paragraph forty-three on EF three-four-oh-eight. In the case now under consideration, account must be taken of the fact that, given the insufficiency of supply in nursery places, the number of places available under the measure at issue is itself limited, and there are waiting lists for female officials working at the ministry, so that they themselves have no guarantee of being able to obtain a place. Utatis mutandis, that is similar to the fact of our case, where there is on the findings of fact a very limited supply of Agudas properties, such that not every applicant, indeed far from every applicant from the OJC, will be allocated an Agudas property. And then paragraph forty-four, moreover, a measure such as that at issue doesn't have the effect of depriving the male employees concerned any more than any other female staff who have not been able to obtain a nursery place under the nursery place scheme subsidized by the ministry of all access to nursery places for their children, since such places still remain accessible mainly on the relevant services market. See by analogy, Badek, that's the footnote. So again, that's obviously similar to the factor which the divisional court took into account when referring to the fact that Agudas controlled only one percent of the social housing in Hackney, with the remaining ninety-nine percent being potentially available to the appellant. And that's my answer to Mr. Wise's inapt reliance on the Bull and Hall case about the hotel rooms, which in passing, I should say, made no mention of this kind of consideration at all. They didn't consider what the relevance might be of other hotel rooms in the town. They were primarily concerned with the fact that the discrimination was on its face unlawful, and there was no positive action measure which could legalize it. My lady, my lord, my lords, it is true that in the following paragraphs of Lomas, the court took into account the fact that male employees were not excluded in the case of emergency. But as you will see when you read the rest of the case, that in substance meant that they would be given nursery places when the men were bringing up children by themselves. No analogy can be drawn in our case. The equivalent fact would be if an applicant from outside the OJC could demonstrate that he or she faced the same needs and disadvantages as those faced from within the OJC, including in relation to antisemitism, et cetera. But that is not the findings of fact made by the divisional court. So to pause there, where the Court of Justice is considering proportionality in the positive action context of the allocation of limited resources, it takes into account the sorts of supply and demand factors which my lady friend, Mr. Wise, asserted were irrelevant. Also, in the passages I have shown you, you see that the Court of Justice conspicuously does not say that the allocation of nursery places or training places is only lawful where there has been an individual assessment of the objective needs of each male and female applicant for the training or nursery place respectively, and does not say that the preference for women only is lawful if it operates as a tiebreaker. Can I now deal with the remaining cases of Kalanki, Marshall, Abrahamson and Brihech more briefly? And I know Mr. Hutchins is going to deal with them as well, so I'm going to curtail what I say, given the time available. But our primary answer to all of them is that they concerned the lawfulness of measures relating to recruitment and promotion of women, where the factual and legal context is very different from those which arise in this case. The first for present purposes was Kalanki, decided in nineteen-ninety-five. And the court's judgment suggested what was with respect a rather limited approach to positive action. And it's worth noting that its judgment was subsequently heavily criticized, both by the European Commission and by academics. And as I will show you, was modified in the later case law. Just to give you one reference for that, if we could look at it, EF four-eight-one-seven. This is in the Craig and De Burgher text. Middle of the page on four-eight-one-seven, the Kalanki ruling prompted a flood of criticism and comment, not only from women's interest groups and from academic and practicing lawyers, but also from the European Commission itself, which issued a communication on the interpretation of the judgment. The Commission took the view that not all quotas would be unlawful and listed a range of positive action measures which would in its view be acceptable despite the ruling. And then it proposed an amendment or clarification of Article two-four. In the subsequent similar case of Marshall, the advocate general suggested that even if individual candidate circumstances had to be taken into account, a national measure giving priority to women over men in underrepresented sectors would still breach the directive. He criticized the Commission's proposed clarification and deemed criticisms of Kalanki to be misconceived. However, the court did not follow the advocate general's opinion, and it narrowed the scope of the Kalanki ruling along the lines of the Commission's proposal by confirming that while a rule guaranteeing absolute and unconditional priority was impermissible, the softer quota, which allowed for individual consideration of circumstances, would fall within Article two-four. Kalanki is at EF three-three-five-nine, authorities thirty-five. We don't need to turn to the text, for the time being at least, but as you would have seen from what I've already shown you, Kalanki is the origin of the phrase absolute and unconditional priority, which later comes to be repeated in the later case law. In our submission, the court's use of that phrase must take its meaning from the context. These cases all concern domestic measures to level the playing field between men and women so as to redress disadvantageous prejudices about the roles and capacities of women working life. And the question considered by the court was whether the measures went beyond what was necessary to achieve equality of opportunity, that being the phrase in Article two-four of the seventy-six directive. And in that specific context, the court held that a measure which automatically and unconditionally gave preference to women went beyond that objective. In the present case, we are not concerned with measures whose purpose is simply to level an employment or other playing field between what are inherently two equally qualified groups, women and men. And this goes back to my lady's point a few moments ago. We are instead concerned with measures whose purpose is to address a range of particular needs, including poverty, overcrowding, in particular arising from the large family sizes of Orthodox Jewish people in Stamford Hill, the particular need to live close together as a religious community, and to redress all the disadvantages caused by antisemitism. That is a short summary why we say that no helpful comparison can be drawn between the principle identified in those cases concerning automatic preferences, tiebreakers, et cetera, and this context. And that submission, my lords, my lady, is supported by the point I alluded to yesterday, that Parliament has itself expressly recognized the difference between these sorts of cases and the more positive, more general positive action measures by making a differentiation within the structure of sections one-hundred-and-fifty-eight and one-hundred-and-fifty-nine. If you could turn, please, to EF two-three-five-nine, authorities tab one. EF two-three-five-nine is section one-hundred-and-fifty-eight, and its title is Positive Action, colon, General. And then you will have seen the various requirements that need to be satisfied. And then at subsection four, you will see that this section does not apply to action within section one-hundred-and-fifty-nine-sub-three. So if you turn over to the, or click over to the next page, you will see Positive Action, Recruitment and Promotion. This is section one-hundred-and-fifty-nine of the Act. This section applies if a person reasonably thinks that persons who share protected characteristics suffer a disadvantage connected to the characteristic or participation in an activity is, by persons who share a protected characteristic is disproportionately low. Those are the analogues to one-five-eight-one-A and one-five-eight-one-C. There is no analog to one-five-eight-one-B, which concerns needs, and this may go back to my lady's point a few moments ago. There's no needs-based criterion in one-five-nine. nine. And then two says, part five of the Act does not prohibit the person from taking action within subsection three with the aim of enabling or encouraging persons who share the protected characteristic to overcome or minimise that disadvantage or participate in that activity, no mention of needs. That action is treating a person A more favourably in connection with the recruitment or promotion than another person because A has the protective characteristic but B does not. But then crucially, in four, subsection two applies only if A is as qualified as B to be recruited or promoted, and P does not have a policy of treating persons who share the protected characteristic more favourably in connection with recruitment or promotion than persons who do not share it. And C, taking the action is proportionate. And that is, in our respectful submission, Parliament recognising the specific Court of Justice case law that I've shown you on recruitment and promotion, and differentiating and limiting its application in a way that is not limited more widely, see section one hundred and fifty-eight. Can I next turn, please, to my submission that the contextual approach in this case is relevantly informed by the approach taken in the domestic judicial review cases which seek to challenge social housing allocation policies? I'm going to refer to two decisions, starting with that of the House of Lords, the unanimous decision in the Ahmad case, EF two six five five, authorities fourteen. The key issue in this case concerned the lawfulness of Newham Council's choice-based letting scheme under the Housing Act and the extent to which it was required to determine competing priorities as between different housing applicants. And I readily acknowledge that this was not a case concerning discrimination, which otherwise directly engaged the proportionality principle, though as I will show you in a few moments, it has been applied in precisely that context in a recent decision by Mr Justice Garnon in the X C and Suback case. The main speeches in Ahmad were given by Lady Hale and Lord Newburger. Can I start, please, with Lady Hale at paragraph fifteen, EF two six six oh? Having concluded that the scheme was intraviris, Lady Hale asks in paragraph fifteen, was it irrational? The earlier decisions of the High Court and the Court of Appeal concluded that the policy was irrational if it didn't contain a mechanism for identifying those with the greatest need and ensuring that so far as possible, the subjects to reasonable countervailing factors, they are given priority. There are numerous problems with that approach. The Act only requires a reasonable preference to be given to particular groups. It can't be said that a scheme for identifying which individual households are in greatest need at any particular time is the only way in which a reasonable council might decide to give reasonable preference to those groups. And then I emphasise the next line, because it's relevant to a submission I'm going to make later, about the mistaken approach of Mr Wise in focusing on individual circumstances. It did the groups rather than the individual households within them, which have to be given reasonable preference. Identifying individual households in greatest need could only be done through some sort of points-based system and experience has shown that these two may be open to attack, either on the ground that they are too rigid and therefore unduly fetter the discretion, or on the ground that they are irrational. And then at letter C, the trouble is that any judicial decision, based as it is, bound to be on the fact of the case, that greater weight should be given to one factor or to a particular accumulation of factors means that lesser weight will have to be given to other factors. The court is in no position to rewrite the whole policy and to weigh the claims of the multitude who are not before the court against the claims of the few who are. And then, please, at Lord Newburger's judgment speech, starting at paragraph forty-six, EF two six six eight. As a general proposition, it's undesirable for the court to get involved in questions of how priorities are according in housing allocation policies. Of course, there will be cases where the court has a duty to interfere, where it doesn't comply with statutory requirements, or if it's plainly irrational. However, it seems that the legislature, it seems unlikely that the legislature can have intended that judges should embark on the exercise of telling authorities how to decide on priorities as between applicants in need of rehousing, save in relatively rare and extreme circumstances. Housing allocation policy is a difficult exercise which requires not only social and political sensitivity and judgement, but also local expertise and knowledge. And then in due course, I would ask you to read the rest of forty-seven through to forty-eight, and then picking it up, please, at fifty-nine on EF two six seven one. The current circumstances of the claimant and his family can't fail to engage sympathy and concern. Mr Ahmad, who is chronically depressed, and his wife live with their four children in a two-bedroom flat. And then there's a description of the circumstances of Mr Ahmad and his family. And then paragraph sixty, both the Deputy Judge and Lord Justice Richards began with a fairly full description of the sad circumstances. It could well be an unfair suspicion on my part, but this may indicate that when they came to consider the scheme, the courts below were impressed by the fact that despite their very unsatisfactory living conditions, the family still hadn't been provided with council accommodation after eight years. Of course, the applicants, the appellant in this case, have been. However, say that in most exceptional circumstances, it would be wrong in principle to have any regard of the housing circumstances and requirements of individual applicants when considering the validity of the scheme. And then paragraph sixty-two, EF two six seven two, point highlights how inept it is for the court to interfere with housing allocation schemes, save in clear and exceptional circumstances. My lords, my lady, I don't say that considerations relevant to deciding whether Newham's allocation policy was rational are identical to those in considering whether Agudas's policy was proportionate. But we do submit that for similar policy reasons, the court should be very reluctant to strike down as disproportionate a policy, in particular where Milano Friend's arguments are based on asserting that their individual needs, the appellant's individual needs, are somehow greater than the needs of the Orthodox Jewish families who have been housed in the two particular houses by Agudas. And I said I was going to show you next the decision of Mr Justice Garnon, authorities twenty-three EF three zero three zero. In which the judge applied the Ahmad case in the context of a discrimination challenge to the council's housing scheme. The particular feature of the scheme of which complaint was made concerned a so-called priority star system, which awarded points to people in working households and awarded points to people who volunteered to help in community organisations. And the judge accepted that that indirectly discriminated against physically disabled people, but rejected the claimant's case that the scheme was disproportionate. As a matter of fact, the priority star system is summarised in the headnote at three oh three one, at paragraph H thirteen to H fourteen, if you could just read those two paragraphs. Having held that the scheme potentially entailed indirect discrimination, the judge addressed the proportionality issue, starting at paragraph seventy-eight of his judgment. You can see that from the heading at the bottom of page EF three zero four nine. He says, I accept the case that the scheme was indirectly discriminatory and therefore the...
I'm afraid, I'm afraid, Mr Grozinski, we're, we're losing you.
Oh.
I'm afraid we lost you for about thirty seconds, sir.
Right, can you hear me now?
I think it was a bandwidth problem.
We can? I'm grateful. So I was just taking you to EF three oh four nine.
Yes.
Bottom of the page, where the judge, having accepted that there was indirect discrimination, went on to consider whether it was proportionate. And explains that the relevant authority was the Supreme Court decision in Astor Communities, that's set out at paragraph eighty-two. And then from paragraph eighty-five onwards, having set out the test and having referred to various other cases, the judge comes to apply that test. Can I focus for now, please, at EF three zero five two? Paragraph ninety to ninety-two. In other words, by its very nature, this scheme, which is authorised by legislation and follows statutory guidance, involves discrimination in order to achieve the stated aims. Those who fall outside the groups, given preference, are inevitably exposed to a detriment for that integral to any reasonable preference scheme. Meeting the test, which I have found is applicable, however, requires that the measure adopted must be the least intrusive which could be used without unacceptably compromising the objective. It must be shown that there is a fair balance struck. Determining those matters in a housing allocation scheme is especially difficult. Every tweak to the scheme to benefit one individual or class is likely to have an adverse effect on the other. Every exception to the operation of a preference may damage the achievement of the objective. The court inevitably concentrates on the circumstances of the claimant in front of it, and it's easy to recognise the disadvantage that the claimant may suffer. But the local authority has to consider the position of all applicants, and the court can only have a most attenuated understanding of their position. And then there's a reference to the Ahmad case that I just took you to, and at paragraph ninety-six, EF three oh five three, the judge says Ahmad predated the Equality Act and doesn't address the act predecessor legislation, but in my judgment, the statements of general principle which I've set out above apply with considerable force to the questions of whether the measure adopted was the least intrusive possible without compromising the objective and whether it struck the right balance. And at ninety-eight, I can see no measure less intrusive, less likely to be detrimental, which wouldn't undermine the legitimate objective identified by the council. To extend the class of volunteers to include all those who, like the claimant, provide some measure of care, would inevitably reduce the ability of the council to cater for those who benefit from the reasonable preference provided by the scheme. To extend the class to include those who can't work because of the type of disabilities suffered by the claimant would inevitably conflict with a legitimate preference to be given to those in work. The wider the class, the less valuable the benefit of being within it. And likewise, my lords, my lady, in our case, to extend the class of applicants for Agudas's properties to all those with a compelling housing need would, for the reasons given by the divisional court, inevitably compromise to a serious extent Agudas's ability to provide properties to those from the Orthodox Jewish community and thereby fundamentally undermine its primary charitable objective. But can I, before leaving this case, just touch upon paragraph one hundred, where the judge says, I am reinforced in the view by the existence within the scheme of provision for exceptional cases. Paragraph X provides that any provision in the scheme may be waived if exceptional and limited circumstances at the discretion of the appropriate senior officer. It's apparent that the council has reserved to itself the right to remedy particular incidents of unfairness, it has a safety valve. And just in case Mr Wise seeks to latch upon that in reply, can I just tell you what we would say? First, the existence of that safety valve was not central to the judge's reasoning, it simply reinforced his conclusions on proportionality, which he had already reached. Second, in our case, Agudas's position is that if it had surplus properties, it would consider allocating them outside the OJC, so the policy does admit of that exceptional category. And thirdly, an identical safety valve in our case, which would require Agudas to individually assess and weigh up every applicant's competing merit from outside the OJC, would both impose a very serious administrative burden on the charity and, to the extent that it ended up allocating a significant number of properties to the general population, would, for the reasons given by the divisional court, undermine Agudas's objectives. So our case is in fact stronger than the X C case, because there was no evidence that if the exceptions were made in that case, as contemplated in paragraph one hundred, the whole rationale of the priority star system of allocating points to working households would be undermined. Can I then turn more generally to the question of whether there is anything necessarily unlawful about a bright line, or what Mr Wise calls a blanket rule? And I just want to deal with one case on that question. It's the decision of this court in the Tegary against Secretary of State for Business case, which, as my lords Reed and Kerr may recall, concerned the exclusion from the government student loan scheme of students who did not have settled status in the UK. That is at EF four one oh five, authorities tab sixteen. On the facts, the majority of the court held that the settlement rule was not proportionate because they considered that a simple rule could have been identified based on long residence in the United Kingdom, which would have been better tailored to meet the aims of the legislation. It's fair to say that there are differences of approach in the judgements to when bright line rules are permissible, but as I'll develop in a minute, none of the judgements go so far as to say that such a rule is never permissible. Can I start, if I may, with the joint judgment of Lords Reed and Sumpson, who although dissenting in the result, with respect, carefully analysed the relevant case law? And in due course, I'd ask you to read all of paragraphs eighty-six to ninety-eight, starting at EF four one three six. But for now, can I just pick up on a few key passages? In fact, rather than me read it out, could I ask you to read paragraphs eighty-eight through to ninety at letter F, just the first two sentences of ninety, so eighty-eight through to the first two sentences of paragraph ninety? But it hasn't, could they let me? Right. Could we then look at the judgments of Baroness Hale, with whom my Lord, Lord Kerr agreed? He dealt with this at paragraph six and the following. He dealt with this at paragraph six and the following. And could I invite you to, in due course, look at paragraphs thirty-six to thirty-seven in particular? But the point I want to focus on is at the end of thirty, thirty-seven, just below letter G. Hitherto, the evidence and discussion in this case has wholly, has tended to focus on whether there should be a bright line rule or wholly individualised system. There are obvious intermediate options, such as a more properly tailored bright line rule, with or without the possibility of making exceptions for particularly strong cases which fall outside this. So Baroness Hale did not say, either in paragraphs thirty-six or thirty-seven, that an exclusionary bright line rule would never be lawful, and expressly contemplated in the passage I have just read out, that a properly tailored rule might not include the possibility of making exceptions for strong cases. And secondly, as my Lord, Lord Reed with Lord Sumption explained, and as Lord Hughes agreed in a passage I'm about to take you to, a bright line rule for eligibility for a benefit is necessarily exclusionary and inclusionary. Lord Reed, Lord Hughes, the passage I want to take you to briefly is at fifty-nine to sixty, EF 4126. Picking it up at fifty-nine, "There's evidence that the view taken was taken that a simply stated and applied rule has great merit to an extent whenever a rule draws a simple line and may be hard cases which fall on the wrong side of it. The Secretary of State case, fully argued by Mr. Kovacs, is that the exclusion of the cohort of aspiring students, of which this department is an example, is the unavoidable consequence of this truth. If this was so, I wouldn't myself have concluded that the settlement rule falls well within the ambit of lawful decisions available to the Secretary of State in framing eligibility rules, and that the discrimination was justified." And then picking it up at letter F, "Such rules tend to be described when their objection is taken as blanket rules, or when their virtues are recognised as bright line rules. But these descriptions, one pejorative and the other approving, obscure the reality, which is that all rules are blanket rules, in the sense that those who meet them are included and those outside them are excluded. All such rules are both inclusionary and exclusionary. If one grafts onto them a residual discretion, they cease to be rules based on readily ascertainable facts and become rules based in part on an evaluative exercise." And ultimately, as the remaining passages of Lord Hughes's judgment makes clear, which I won't read out now, "The reasoning the appeal was allowed in part by the majority was because they held, as my Lord Reed may recall and my Lord Kerr may recall, that alternative rule could have been identified, which did not entail detailed consideration of the merits of every student's case in terms of their ties to the UK, but rather one that was much simpler to administer, simply based on the length of residence in the UK. That would, as Lord Hughes put it in para sixty-five, be based on ascertainable fact rather than evaluative assessment. In the present case, the only kind of policy advocated by Mr. Wise to replace the current approach is one that depends on what is manifestly an evaluative exercise, requiring Agudas in every single case to decide whether an applicant who wants one of its properties that is not from the OJC has a more pressing housing need than those from within the OJC, even after taking into account all the needs and disadvantages faced specifically by members of the OJC." So for all those reasons, both based upon Court of Justice case law, Strasbourg case law and domestic case law, even if Agudas's arrangements could be characterised as a blanket rule, they wouldn't for that reason be unlawful. And then finally, underground three, we say that even if there was a relevant test drawn from the Kamanke line of cases, that a policy which gave automatic and unconditional priority to members of the protective group, Agudas's arrangements do not contravene that test. The concept of an automatic and unconditional rule entails giving preference to a group irrespective of the surrounding relevant circumstances. But that is not the position here for the reasons urgently explained by the divisional court in the passages I'm going to take you to, starting, please, in the divisional court at paragraph seventy-three, which is at EF 273. Bottom of the page, "A central point in Mr. Wise's submissions on proportionality was that Agudas's allocation arrangements represented a blanket policy of restriction and exclusion. We don't believe that's a fair and accurate way of characterising those arrangements. Agudas's charitable objectives permit and oblige it to a called primary benefit to members of the community. There is no unqualified restriction of benefits to members of that community, nor absolute exclusion of non-members. Agudas currently has over seven hundred applicants on its waiting list. It has a total housing stock of four hundred and seventy homes in Hackney. But the crucial consideration in this context is that over the seven-year period from 2011 to 2018, only eighty-nine general needs properties became available for allocation, a marginal availability of only about twelve to thirteen properties each year, with a huge imbalance between supply and demand." Evidence. There is a model of social housing in Hackney generally. Around thirteen thousand households are currently registered under its scheme for allocation of social housing, and in 2016 it allocated only twelve hundred and twenty-nine properties for social housing. And there's no evidence that the imbalance is likely to decrease markedly in the foreseeable future. In these circumstances, it is self-evident to us why in practice Agudas allocates each of its properties, which at the margin becomes available to members of the OJC. Given the limited availability too and pressing demand from that community, if Agudas were to allocate any of its properties to non-members, it would seriously dilute the number of properties available to Orthodox Jews and would fundamentally undermine its charitable objectives of giving them primary position in a meaningful as distinct from formalistic sense. We have also concluded that Agudas's arrangements are justified and proportionate for the reasons we have already given. The disadvantages and needs of the OJC are many and compelling. They are also, in many cases, very closely related to the matter of housing accommodation. We recognise the needs of other applicants for social housing, but in the particular market conditions to which we have referred, Agudas's arrangements are proportionate in addressing the needs and disadvantages of the OJC, notwithstanding the fact that in those market conditions, a non-member can't realistically expect Agudas to allocate to him or her any property that becomes available." And then if you finally read seventy-seven to seventy-eight, I won't read that out. And ultimately, we respectfully endorse the approach in those two paragraphs, and that's all I need to say relation to ground three. And I noticed the time is now ten to twelve. Would that be a good time to break for five minutes?
Yes, it would be. Thank you very much. We'll, we'll resume at five to twelve. We're now ready to resume the hearing in the appeal of ZAD and Hackney London Borough Council, and I'll invite Mr. Grodzinski to resume his submissions.
Thank you, my lord. I'm now going to address the offence case under ground four. Under, they say, "Even if they can't succeed by relying upon the Court of Justice Employment Recruitment's case law on positive action, and even if a traditional approach to proportionality is adopted, the divisional court's conclusions on fair balance was flawed." I've taken you to some passages towards the end of the divisional court's judgment on that question a few moments ago. Can I go back to the divisional court's judgment now, please, at EF 271? Where the court discusses the factors that lead up to the conclusion that I just took you to, starting at paragraph sixty-three, second sentence. It's plain from the evidence set out in paragraphs thirty-one to thirty-four above, that the disadvantages faced by the Orthodox Jews are both real and substantial. First, there are very high levels of poverty and deprivation, with associated low levels of home ownership. I'm not going to read the rest of that paragraph now, but would invite you to in due course. Sixty-five, "In any event, there are in this case disadvantages which on any view are connected to the religion of Orthodox Judaism. We refer again, in particular, to the widespread and increasing overt antisemitism in our society, and to the forty-four and a half per cent increase in reported antisemitic crime." And then they give the relevant years and figures. "A traditional Orthodox Jewish clothing, which characterises the community, heightens the exposure to antisemitism and to related criminality. In particular, Mrs. Zimmerman Simons stated in evidence that in forty years working in the OJC in Hackney, she had heard countless accounts from housing applicants whom AHA has housed from the private sector about the prejudice they faced in trying to rent in the private sector on account of their appearance, their language and their religion. This evidence was not challenged, and we believe that it credibly describes the position that members of the OJC are likely to face in seeking accommodation." And for your note, I won't take you to it. That evidence can be found at EF 1501 at paragraph fifteen. Second, under section one hundred and fifty-eight, one B, "The sole limitation on the relevant need is that of being different from the needs of persons who don't share the protective characteristic. In our view, the evidence again demonstrates that the needs of the OJC are indeed different for the reasons we have set out. The members of that community have a relevant need to live relatively close to each other, with a view to reducing apprehension and anxiety regarding personal security, antisemitic abuse and crime. There was also evidence before us of the relevant need for family and community facilities, such as schools, synagogues and shops, as well as the special features of the accommodation already mentioned." And then the court rejects Mr. Wise's arguments about why that was irrelevant. And then over the page EF 272, paragraph sixteen-nine, "As for the particular characteristics of the housing, such as kosher kitchens, we would accept that standing alone, they'd be unlikely to be sufficient to justify the challenged discrimination, but we don't believe they should be entirely discounted. Given appropriately limited weight, they may properly be taken into account in the proportionality analysis, with the considerably weightier matters to which we have already referred. There was much evidence before the court relating to the very high levels of experience of overcrowded accommodation in Hackney. Mr. Wise argued that such evidence didn't support Agudas's justification for discriminatory arrangements because overcrowding was a general problem. But there was evidence in data from 2015 showing that the average number of occupants of OJC households in Stamfordhill was six point three, in contrast to the whole of Hackney average of two point four three. In our view, this evidence demonstrates a particular need in the OJC for property, likely to be in very short supply, that would accommodate substantially larger families, and that would significantly reduce the particular and intensified risk to such families of eviction from overcrowded accommodation. We are satisfied for these reasons that Agudas's arrangements for allocating housing which place OJC in a primary position enable them both to avoid the disadvantages and to meet the needs to which we have referred." And the overall reasoning of the divisional court was, if I may respectfully say so, pithily summarised by the Court of Appeal at EF 248, paragraph eighty-seven, if you could just look at that very briefly. Where the court says, "In short eyes," is Lord Justice Lewisan, "consider that the divisional court answered the questions posed by Cole," that's the proportionality questions, "as follows: The disadvantage to non-members of the OJC was the withdrawal of one per cent of the potentially available units of accommodation. The scale of that disadvantage was minuscule. The needs of the OJC linked to the relevant protective characteristics were many and compelling. The allocation of properties to non-members of the OJC would fundamentally undermine Agudas's charitable objectives. There was no more limited way of achieving the legitimate aim. Weighing those factors together, Agudas's allocation policy was proportional. I do not consider that there is any flaw in this analysis that would entitle an appeal court to intervene." And that touches upon the next point I want to mention briefly, which concerns the specific role of an appellate court when being invited to depart from an evaluative conclusion based on a plethora of evidence made by a judgment of a first instance court. The Court of Appeal correctly recognised the role of an appellate court in that context. If you could just turn back, please, and the same judgment is just in looking at, the paragraphs sixty-three to sixty-eight. I won't take up time by asking you to read it now, let alone reading it out, but the Court of Appeal there carefully spells out what the relevant principles are, culminating in the judgment of Lord Kerr in the DB and Chief Constable of Police Service of Northern Ireland case, cited at paragraph sixty-seven on EF 243. Where he recalls the expression used in the Anderson case, this is in the middle of EF 243, in the middle of the intended passage, the vivid expression in Anderson, "The first instance trial should be seen as the main event rather than a tryout on the road," has resonance even for a case which does not involve oral testimony, and then he explains why. And then the Court of Appeal says, "Those observations have particular force in the present case, where the divisional court were presented with a mass of demographic and sociological evidence from multiple reputable sources. So we would respectfully endorse that approach." Turning then to the specific criticisms made by Mr. Wise under ground four, they are unsustainable for two central reasons. First, as I said yesterday, in trying to overcome the fact that Agudas has only one per cent of all social housing in Hackney, Mr. Wise focuses on the particular impact of the policy on his client's personal circumstances in a narrow window of time when it happened that several properties in Zemba and Gelman House became available. Whereas the right approach was that taken by the divisional court at paragraph seventy-seven, which asked whether the arrangements viewed as a whole and in light of the relevant market circumstances, addressed the disadvantages and needs of the OJC in a manner that outweighs the disadvantages to non-members of that community. That group-based approach is supported not only by the case law I have shown you already, including XC, but also by the guidance on section one hundred and fifty-eight, contained in the EHRC code, if you can please turn to it at EF 2400. This is under the guidance on positive action in the code, under the heading, "What does proportionate mean?" If you look, please, at paragraph ten point two-two.
And just to remind us, Mr. Grodzinski, this is a code which statute requires us to have regard to, isn't it?
It is, and the requirement to have regard to it is contained in the Equality Act 2006, section fifteen four B.
Thank you.
And that's in the bundles.
Yes, I'm sorry I interrupted you.
I know. Paragraph ten point two-two, the seriousness of the, just to put this in context, this is in the code guidance on the proportionality approach in positive action of the section one hundred and fifty-eight. I'm going to come back to later parts of the code on section one hundred and ninety-three when I deal with that provision. The seriousness of the relevant disadvantage, the degree to which the need is different, and the extent of the low participation in the particular activity. will need to be balanced against the impact of the action on other protected groups and the relative disadvantage need or participation of these groups. So it's at a group level, not at an individual claimant level. That is also supported by the Strasbourg case law on proportionality. See the case, for example, of Carson and the U.K., the well-known case, EF4319. In particular, at paragraph... Can I just give myself one moment? At paragraph 62, bottom of 4319, where the Strasbourg Court at Grand Chamber says, the court observes at the outset that as with all complaints of alleged discrimination in a welfare or pension system, it's concerned with the compatibility with Article 14, not with the individual facts or circumstances of the particular applicants or of others who are or might be affected by the legislation. Much is made in the applicant submissions and in those of the third party intervenor of the extreme financial hardship which may result from the policy not to uprate pensions and of the effect that this might have on the ability of certain persons to join their families abroad. But this court is not in a position to make an assessment of the effects, if any, on the many thousands in the same position as the applicants, nor should it try to do so. Any welfare system to be workable may have to use broad categorizations to distinguish between different groups in need. And then finally, the focus on individual circumstances rather than on groups is contrary to the approach to the overall fair balancing exercise entailed in the proportionality assessment, explained in several decisions of this court. I'm not going to take up time, given how well trodden the territory is, by going to them, but to give you two references. Bank Melat, EF3622, para 74, per Lord Reed. As for communities, that's the next authority, EF2477, para 28, Baroness Hale. That's all I want to say on the first fundamental flaw underground four. The second fundamental flaw is the incorrect assertion that I've already touched on, that the facts concerning what Mr Wise calls market conditions are irrelevant, when they are, on the contrary, manifestly relevant to the question of proportionality. And that's because a comparison between the relative benefits of the policy for members of the included group, the OJC, compared to the impactful detriment to people from outside the community by not having access to Agudas' housing stock, obviously cannot be undertaken in a factual vacuum divorced from the surrounding circumstances concerning supply and demand. That was made clear in the Lomas and Badik cases, among others. Likewise, the question of whether a different policy which admits of the possibility of applications from outside the community would or would not undermine the benefits to the OJC can't be answered in a vacuum divorced from the facts. The remaining criticisms made in Milena Friend's written case underground four have all been answered in our written case at paragraphs 54 to 57, to which I have little to add. There's only one specific point I want to address, which is the assertion in the written case that my client had used very limited evidence that its provision of social housing prevented or compensated for the disadvantages connected with antisemitism. That point was with respect entirely unsustainable, given the divisional court's findings of fact on the evidence. The court addressed the general evidence of antisemitism at paragraph 33, in particular in relation to the community in Stamford Hill, and dealt expressly with the relevance of that evidence to applicants for social housing in paragraph 66, which I've already read out to you. And as I've already mentioned, the source of that conclusion is at EF1501, paragraph 15. And just for the sake of completeness, Mr Wise advanced the same point in the Court of Appeal and it was rejected in terms I'm about to show you. Starting, please, at 75. Bottom of EF244. This is recording Mr Wise's submission to the Court of Appeal. Lord Justice Lewison says, Mr Wise accepts that the divisional court were entitled to accept the evidence of antisemitism, including in access to the private sector housing. There was some debate about whether the divisional court were entitled to refer to increasing antisemitism, but that is significant. Whether increasing or not, antisemitism was at an unacceptable level. But, says Mr Wise, the court didn't consider the extent to which Agudas' arrangements with the allocation of housing actually contribute to ameliorating antisemitism and hence made no attempt to weigh such matters against the detriment. And so that's a point Mr Wise repeats in this court and it's addressed trenchantly at paragraphs 78 to 79. Could I ask you to read 78 to 79 at EF245?
Yes.
So my lord, all the remaining criticisms of detail as to the fair balance exercise conducted by the divisional court, advanced by Mr Wise, have been responded written case at paragraphs 54 to 57, and I don't wish to take up further time in going through them. Can I then turn, please, now to address the question of whether the Court of Appeal was right to hold that section 193.2b did not require a freestanding proportionality assessment test to be read in? As I've indicated, our primary argument is that even if the Race Directive or Article 14 were engaged in this case, which they are not, the plain words of 193.2b are compatible with the positive action provisions of the directives and with the requirements of Article 14. We submit that the specific provisions for charities enacted in section 193 were intended by Parliament to be compatible EU equality legislation and clearly fall within Parliament's margin of appreciation in ensuring such compatibility. Parliament has constructed a closely circumscribed scheme defining the circumstances in which a charity can restrict the provision of benefits and those requirements include that the provision is in pursuance of a charitable instrument. In that way, the requirements of 193 necessarily incorporate a public benefit test which any organization must satisfy to operate as a registered charity under the Charitors Legislation, as I'll show you shortly. And that public benefit test itself, bless you, a balancing exercise between public benefit and detriment. When taken together with each of the other requirements of section 193, including that the provision of benefits is for the purpose of preventing or compensating for a disadvantage linked to a protected characteristic, Parliament has enacted a system which satisfies the relevant requirements of justification and proportionality under EU and Convention law. In other words, once the provision of benefits is made by a registered charity which has met the public benefit test and the benefits are provided to people who all share a characteristic which is protected under the Act and they are provided for the specific purpose of preventing or compensating for a disadvantage linked to that characteristic, Parliament has itself determined that the provisions of benefits will be justified in proportionate in general. And I say in general because there are specific exceptions and exclusions in section 193 and 194. Section 194 disapplies 193 in color-based discrimination cases. 194, for some reason, isn't in the authorities bundle, but it can be found in the judgment below at EF220, paragraph 10.
I can just ask this. I understand why you need to deal with this point, Mr Grzesinski, I understand that entirely. But am I right in thinking that if your submissions on 193.2a are correct or indeed if your submissions on either limb of section 158 are correct, then this issue doesn't need to be addressed?
My lord is right.
Fine, thank you.
Can we look, please, as I say, at section 194 of the Act, set out in the judgment below at EF220?
I think it may be 230.
230. For some reason, 220 doesn't exist, it's a missing page. It's 230. You see at paragraph 10, this is in the judgment of Lord Justice Lewison. Paragraph 10, race and religion are protected characteristics, but section 194.2 provides that section, i.e. section 193, does not apply to race so far as relating to color. There are also other exceptions within section 193 itself, in particular concerning discrimination in the context of employment. See 193 subsection 9, Authorities Bundle, tab 1, EF2363, where you see a number of exceptions in 193.9, all of which, if one turns to them, related in some way to employment and harassment in employment contexts. And then there's a disapplication of the exception in relation to disability. I won't take up time dealing with the reasons for all of that, but the exceptions within 193 and 194 reinforce our case that Parliament has constructed a carefully calibrated and proportionate scheme in line with the EU law that I have already shown you. Can I, developing that point, then turn, under the heading of Legislative History, to the history which culminated in the enactment of section 193 of the 2010 Act? Now, I want to start by looking at the quartet of directives which form the EU law background. The first directive is one we have already looked at in the context of the case law, which concerned equal treatment for men and women in access to employment, passed in 1976, at EF4509, which in article 2 sub 4, at the foot of 4509, said that the directive was without prejudice to measures to provide equal opportunity for men and women, in particular by removing existing inequalities which affects women's opportunities in the area referred to in article 1, which you can see from the top of the page, concerned equal treatment with regards access to employment, promotion, vocational training and working conditions. We can then move forward by many years to the year 2000, when two related directives were passed. The first is Council Directive 2043, EF3177. That is a directive implementing the principle of equal treatment between persons irrespective of racial or ethnic origin, what's been called in this case the Race Directive. Could you look, please, at recital 17 on EF3178? This is an important recital in the context of the current case. The prohibition of discrimination should be without prejudice to the maintenance or adoption of measures intended to prevent or compensate for disadvantages suffered by a group of persons of a particular racial or ethnic origin. And such measures may permit organizations of persons of a particular racial or ethnic origin where their main object is the promotion of the special needs of those persons. And I would say those include, can include, charities. Then article 1 sets out the purpose to lay down a framework for combating discrimination. Article 2 defines direct and indirect discrimination. And article 5, headed Positive Action, says with a view to ensuring full equality in practice, the principle of equal treatment shall not prevent any member state from maintaining or adopting specific measures to prevent or compensate for disadvantages linked to racial or ethnic origin. And that wording was foreshadowed by the passing of the Treaty of Amsterdam the previous year. We don't need to go through that now, it's set out in the case law. But the Treaty of Amsterdam used such language, passed in 1999. And in the same year was passed Council Directive 2000/78, EF4512, establishing a general framework for equal treatment in employment and occupation. In other words, not limited to equal treatment between the sexes. If you look, please, on EF4513, you will see a similar recital at recital 26 to the one I just showed you. The prohibition of discrimination should be without prejudice to the maintenance or adoption of measures intended to prevent or compensate for disadvantages suffered by a group of persons of a particular religion or belief, disability, age or sexual orientation. Such measures may permit organizations of persons of a particular religion or belief, disability, age or sexual orientation, with their main object is the promotion of the special needs of those persons. Article 1 describes the purpose of the directive, again, in the context of employment. And article 7 describes the permissible positive action, echoing the language I just took you to, but extending its application beyond the field of sex. And then finally, EF451, Council Directive 2004113 EC, implementing the principle of equal treatment between men and women in the access to and supply of goods and services. If you look at recital 16, EF4520. A somewhat different language is used. And then you can see in the last sentence of recital 16, language that came to be picked up in the case law, any limitation should nevertheless be appropriate up in the case law, any limitation should nevertheless be appropriate and necessary in accordance with criteria derived from the case law to Court of Justice. And then Article 1 describes the purpose on EF4522. And positive action is dealt with in Article 6, referring to full equality in practice between men and women. And I then turn, with that background, to the domestic legislation. As the Court will recall, equal treatment between men and women in employment was dealt with under the Sex Discrimination Act 1975, Authorities 42, EF3480. If you pick it up at EF3481, you will see that in that domestic context, there was a specific provision made for charities by Section 43. Nothing in Parts 2 to 4 shall be construed as affecting a provision to which this subsection applies or render unlawful an act which is done in order to give effect to such a provision. Subsection 1 applies to a provision for conferring benefits of one person, on persons of one sex only, dot, dot, became a charitable instrument. But then that wide wording was limited by the introduction in Regulations 2008, see footnote 1, of Section 43.2A. But subsection 1 does not apply to discrimination under Section 1 or 2A in its application to Section 29 to 31, unless the conferral of benefits is, A, a proportionate means of achieving a legitimate aim, or B, for the purpose of preventing or compensating for a disadvantage linked to sex. And my lords and ladies will see the obvious similarity between that and what came to be Section 193:2 of the 2010 Act. That subsection, as I say, was introduced by the 2008 Regulations, footnoted at footnote 1 on that page. The explanatory note to the introduction of those regulations, which made lots of different amendments to the 1975 Act, can be seen at EF3483. Paragraph 2.1, the Sex Discrimination Amendment to Legislation Rights 2008, amends the SDA and analogous Northern Irish legislation to implement Council Directive 2004113, the Gender Directive. Picking it up at 4.1 on that page, second line, the Gender Directive implements the EC law principle of equal treatment between men and women in the access to and supply of goods and services. Over the page 7.12, at EF3484, it had been the government's intention to publish the proposals for an Equality Bill in March 07. However, in order to focus on getting the policy for an Equality Bill right, consultation was delayed, but not on effect of the publication of the consultation on the proposals for implementing the Gender Directive. And then in due course, you may wish to read the next paragraph, which describes the public consultation. And then in 7.14, 90 responses to the public consultation on the proposal to implement the Gender Directive were received. The greatest proportion came from local authorities, equality bodies, transgender lobby groups, employer organisations, et cetera. And then at 7.16, under the heading compatibility, i.e. with EU law, of SDA exceptions, since the consultation, Schedule 1, paragraph 7 and 11, 11 being the charities paragraph, which narrow the existing exception for voluntary bodies and charities in those areas in which the Gender Directive operates, have been amended to incorporate the derogations permitted in respect of single-sex provision in Article 4.5 of the Gender Directive and in respect of positive action in Article 6. So the formula that I showed you a moment ago, as introduced by the 2008 Regulations, then came to be adopted by Parliament two years later, when the 2010 Act was passed. And the provision for charities was given express consideration by the Joint Committee on Human Rights. You asked questions to the Solicitor General. Could you look, please, at EF3508? The questions in italics are asked by the Joint Committee on Human Rights. Has the government given consideration to restricting the circumstances in which charities will be able to discriminate on the basis of protected characteristics? See the answer to question 71. Will charities be able to discriminate on the basis of protected characteristics when delivering public services, when this is in accordance with their charitable instrument? Would such discrimination be objectively justified under Clause 186.2A, which became 193? Solely on the basis that a charity was established to benefit a particular group or to further a particular religion? That's a reference back to how the law was in the sex context before the 2008 regs amendment. Answer, the government has given consideration to restricting the circumstances in which charities will be able to discriminate on the basis of protected characteristics. These circumstances are being restricted further through the Equality Bill. At the moment, most of the exceptions for charities mean that they can discriminate simply if their charitable instrument allows this. The bill's proposals mean that a charity would also need to show that it was justified in discriminating. Under Clause 186, now 193, any charities benefiting only people who share a protected characteristic, such as people of the same religion, will not be able to discriminate on the basis of that protected characteristic when delivering public or other services just because their charitable instrument provides for this. They will also need to show that such discrimination is objectively justified when intended to prevent or compensate for disadvantage linked to the protected characteristic. It will ultimately be for the courts to decide whether one of those additional tests is met. That's the legislative history, all of which we say supports our submission, but 193, in both limbs, in 2A and 2B, was expressly intended to ensure compatibility with EU legislation, not just for the Race Directive, but also for the other directives. And that is finally supported by the EHRC Code at EF2413. This is the part of the code dealing with Section 193. And if you look, please, I'm sorry, it's the previous page I want to start at, at EF2412, paragraph 13.35. The public benefit test that all charities must satisfy to gain charitable status may assist, but it won't guarantee that any such restriction meets either of the tests in the Act. The Charity Commission will consider the likely impact of any restriction on beneficiaries in the charitable instrument and whether such restriction can be justified in assessing whether the aims of a charity meet the public benefit test. And then there's a reference of the two different limbs of 193:2. So then 1336 is about 193:2A, and 1337 is about 193:2B. And if you then turn to 1338, there is no requirement that a charity must provide benefits to the most disadvantaged group or assess the relative disadvantage of different groups. The Act only requires that if a charity provides benefits to a group of persons with the same protected characteristic to the exclusion of others, it must be able to show that the purpose of restricting benefits in this way is to prevent or compensate for disadvantage experienced by members of the selected group or groups. The final.
Rather an important point, isn't it? Because there's deliberate change of language between 158 and 193. 158 gives you a range of options, meeting needs, preventing disadvantage and so on. But when you get to 193, it's only about preventing or compensating for disadvantage. And what you've shown has seemed to suggest that that particular phrase has to be interpreted in accordance with EU law.
I would respectfully agree.
So what is the difference between the two sections? What's left out of 193 that would be within 158?
Well, 193:2B, as I said, is Parliament striking the balance itself, so that there does not need to be for a charity, on a case-by-case basis, an establishment that it has weighed up the relative disadvantages to the various groups, because Parliament has decided that position for itself. That's the key difference between the two for present purposes. So my lady's gone on mute again.
To ask, can you give me an example of something which would be meeting a need, or rather, meeting a need but not preventing or compensating a disadvantage? Because there's obviously a distinction.
There is. You might have a need, but then there will often be, if one thinks of Venn diagrams, an overlap between the two circles. But the particular needs in the present case, which the divisional court referred to, included, for example, the need to live close to, within walking distance of synagogues, so that you could get to them on the Sabbath. And all the needs, albeit they place less weight on this, for physical adaptations to the properties, to more readily be able to practise one's religion from kitchens, for example, that had separate sinks, et cetera. By contrast, disadvantages concern, for example, the disadvantages inherent in antisemitism. On the other hand, you could characterise those as needs in the sense that if you face antisemitism when you go and ask for a property from the private sector, your need for a property in the public sector social housing area might be said to be greater, which is why I said that sometimes there's an overlap between the two.
Yes, that may be a very helpful way of looking at it, because there's obviously a need for social housing on the evidence as found. A need isn't within 193, but it may be that you're compensating for the disadvantage or preventing a disadvantage by virtue of the attitude in society to the OJC, or preventing them from being disadvantaged by being distanced from the community.
I would agree, my lady. And can I give you another example, which might be said to fall into both categories? OJC families tend to have large numbers of children, primarily, I try not to give evidence from my own knowledge, but primarily because of their disapproval, generally speaking, of the use of contraception, and because of the type of requirement of having a large number of children. That leads to a particular need to have multiple-bedroom properties. You could also say that it's, I mean, you wouldn't say having lots of children is a disadvantage, although most people wouldn't say that. But you could also say that they face a particular disadvantage in the shortage of multiple-bedroom properties available in the housing sector. So the issues arising from a need to have four-bedroom, three-bedroom properties could also be characterised as a disadvantage if you can't get them elsewhere.
You mentioned the children, they're very important, obviously. Could it not be said that in this particular context, the right to family life included recognition by the state of the particular issues for families of this size in this community?
My lady, I would not demur from that proposition, but I'm not sure how far I would take it, because I don't need to rely upon Article 8 as part of my positive case. And as you know, we say that the move of the appellant's from one property to another under a social housing scheme does not fall within the ambit of Article 8. But can I deal with that matter more generally when I deal with Article 8 at the end of my submission?
Yes, I've had no difficulty about the proposition that the transfer from one property to another is not within Article 8. I just wondered whether we had looked sufficiently carefully at the position of the right to enjoy your family life with your children.
Well, my lady, I don't think I can add anything further to what I've said already.
Many thanks.
Can I then briefly turn to the public benefit test? Can I ask you to look, please, first at EF266? Again, for some reason, I'm doing this because Section 194 isn't in the authorities bundle. But in EF266, you see Section 194. And you see that 194.3, charity is defined in relation to England and Wales as having the meaning given by Section 1.1 of the Charities Act 2011. We can then find the Charities Act 2011 in the supplementary bundle that we ensured the Court got last week. If you can start, please, at EF4822.
Now, this is actually numbered for us from 1 to 99, but we have an index.
It's not going to be difficult for me to navigate through, my lord.
Yeah, the 2011 Act begins at page 2 of the bundle.
Right, so if you look at Section 1.1, for the purposes of the law of England and Wales, charity means an institution which is established for charitable purposes only. Then turning over the page to Section 2, for the purpose of the law of England and Wales, a charitable purpose is a purpose which falls within Section 3 and is for the public benefit, see Section 4. Section 3 over the page describes various purposes, including the prevention or relief of poverty, advancement of education, advancement of religion, et cetera. Then turning over two pages, we get to Section 4, the public benefit requirement. In this Act, the public benefit requirement means the requirement in 2.1b, that a purpose falling within 3 must be for the public benefit if it is to be a charitable purpose. In determining whether the public benefit requirement is satisfied, it is not to be presumed that a purpose is for the public benefit. Three, in this chapter, any reference to public benefit is a reference to the public benefit, as that term is understood for the purposes of the law relating to charities in England and Wales. In other words, that is an incorporation of the centuries-old common law on charities. That test has evolved in the common law over many years, and the most recent leading exposition of its meaning has been given in the decision of the upper tribunal, Mr Justice Warren presiding, the well-known, at least well-known in charity circles, judicial review case concerning whether the test was met by fee-paying independent schools. That case was decided under the Charities Act 2006, but there's been no material change for present purposes by the 2011 Act. Given the time, I'm not going to be able to take you through anything like the whole of this lengthy judgment. Can I just pick up a couple of references, starting, please, at paragraph 26?
But just before we go to it, can I just ask, under Section 3 of the 2011 Act, which is at page 4 of the supplementary bundle, I see that the charitable purposes include, under J, the relief of those in need because of, reading on, other disadvantage?
Yes.
Now, is that the relevant head for this case?
Well, that should be answered, my lord, by reference to the charitable objects clause in Agudas's charitable instrument, which can be.
I suppose there might be more than one. I mean, A is.
There is more than one.
A is the prevention or relief of poverty, so that might be relevant also.
Indeed, because as shown by the examples I gave you more generally, Agudas doesn't, leaving aside Eaton Square, Agudas doesn't house people who generally are of sufficient financial means not to need their charitable benevolence.
Yeah. Yes, yes, thank you.
So just picking up where I left off in relation to the. relation to the decision of the upper tribunal. Can I pick it up at paragraph 26?
On page?
Well, I've got EFs. So mine is EF4868. If you look in the Chancery Division official report.
I beg your pardon, I've got it.
Yep, 230, top of the page, EF4868, 4846. So starting with the Charity Commission's guidance at 26, the guidance focuses on two stated principles and the number of sub-principles. If you look at principle 1c, benefits must be balanced against any detriment or harm. And then there's a discussion of all of that in other parts of the judgment. Can you pick it up, please, starting at paragraph 64? Well, the whole discussion starts at paragraph 42. And I'm not going to take up time looking at it. But if you look at paragraph 64, there's a reference to the decision of the House of Lords in the Anti-Dedensection Society case, where the discussion starts at paragraph 62. But then there's a reference to Lord Simmons having something of relevance to say. So EF4857, para 64, Lord Simmons had something of relevance to say at, he gives a citation, he addressed the need to balance the benefits and injurious effects on society or the purpose of the society. And then there's a long review of the case law on the nature of that balancing exercise. And the tribunal draws the threads together at paragraphs 105 and 106. If you pick that up at EF4868, just by letter F. As we see it, the court must be able to take into account the detrimental effects of implementation of an object in a particular way, even when that object implemented in other ways could be clearly charitable. The court, we conclude, has to balance the benefit and disadvantage in all cases where the detriment is alleged and is supported by evidence. So if to take an extreme example, Agudas controlled the vast majority or all of social housing in Hackney and exclusively reserved all its properties for members of the OJC to the detriment of the remaining population of Hackney, it would be difficult, if not impossible, to see how that would be compatible with its charitable requirements. Can I draw all that together then in the remaining five minutes before lunch to explain how we make our case on section 193.2b? And I do so in five points. One, the relevant EU directives expressly contemplate the existence of bodies whose main object is the promotion of the special needs of persons with protected characteristics and the adoption of measures to compensate for disadvantages faced by those people. See, for example, recital 17 and Article 5 of the Race Directive. Two, by enacting a test which incorporates the public benefit test and which requires the benefits to be provided to people who all share a protected characteristic, which won't always be the case for charities, but is in this case, and that the benefits are provided for the specific purpose of preventing or compensating for a disadvantage linked to that characteristic, Parliament has determined that the position will generally be justified and proportionate under EU law. Three, such a scheme has the significant advantage, recognised in the EHRC Code, of meaning that charities who provide benefits to a limited class in accordance with the statutory requirement in 193.2b do not need to demonstrate in each and every case that they are acting proportionately and in accordance with a legitimate aim because Parliament has determined that already. Four, this is a new point. We say it's relevant that charities are not to be fully equated with the state, even though they are acting for the public benefit and even assuming they can be described for judicial review purposes as carrying out public functions. So in the inherently unlikely event that a housing or other charity was extremely generous in how it provided benefits to a limited class, that is unlikely to mean that the state will have left others unprovided for. In the area of housing, local authorities will always have their statutory duties, including under the homelessness legislation, irrespective of what provision a charity chooses to make. Five, and finally, this statutory scheme falls well within the margin of appreciation according to Parliament. That is so, however wide or narrow the margin. But as we've said in our written case, we submit that the relevant margin test in this context is the manifestly without reasonable foundation test. And I'm not going to take up time on that well-worn territory, but I'll just give you two references. It's JS and Work and Pensions Secretary, Authorities 20, per Lord Reed, at paragraph 11, EF2959. And Gillam and the Ministry of Justice, per Baroness Hale, EF3745, paragraph 34. And then finally, under this heading, and before turning the pen and essay to whether the Race Directive is engaged, can I just say a brief word about the Catholic care cases relied upon by my learned friend in his written case? Nothing in the decision of Mr Justice Briggs or Mr Justice Sales, as they both then were in those cases, affects the conclusions I have just drawn for the reasons given by Lord Justice Lewison in this case at paragraphs 42 to 43, which I won't ask you to look at now, but which we would respectfully agree. And in looking at what Lord Justice Briggs, your pardon, what Mr Justice Briggs said in the first case, one has to remember that he was focusing on the legislation as it stood prior to the insertion in 2008 of what became section, subsection 43.2aB of the Sex Discrimination Act. And he said nothing about the compatibility or otherwise with EU law or Article 14 of what is now section 193.2b. If anything, the judgment of Mr Justice Briggs in the first case assists our analysis because he concluded, when looking at the regulation even before its amendment in 2008, that the public benefit test by itself inherent in charities would be sufficient in most cases to ensure compatibility with Article 14. That's even before it was further limited, as it came to be, in 2008 and in the 2010 Act. And the reference to that, it's worth just having a look at. It's EF2539, paragraph 99, between letters C and D. He says, "It's sufficient for my purposes to conclude as I do that the public benefit requirement inherent in charitable status would be sufficient in most cases to prevent Regulation 18 having a scope that made it incompatible with convention rights, precisely the cost of a large public disbenefit likely to flow from any unjustified and therefore discriminatory differential treatment." My lords, my ladies, that's all I want to say. And I suspect now is a good time to break before I spend the last 30 minutes available to me dealing with the Race Directive engagement question and the ambit of Article 8 question.
Thank you very much, Mrs Grisinski. We'll adjourn then and resume at 2 o'clock.
Thank you.